All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us here at CAG Chat. I am joined by my co- I am Sherman Hardy and I'm joined by my co-host, Tanya, and Levon, and Derek, and Donna will be joining us later. We also have a couple of guests joining us tonight. We're going to be talking about some of the things that's happened in and around the county involving education and what's been going on with the school board. We're also going to talk about prosecutorial misconduct a little later. But I'm going to go ahead and toss it over to, well, before I toss it over to Levon, we're going to go ahead and give you all our disclaimer, which is pretty much, we're not an attorney, so if you need some legal advice, please seek one. All right, and again, thank you all for joining us. I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Levon, and she's going to give you all some hot topics for today.
Well, actually, we need to look because Dolores only has a short time.
That's right. All right, well, I'm going to toss it over to Tanya. She has a, you know, wanted to talk about some of the things going on in education, and we brought Dolores Millhouse on with us.
Well, I'm going to turn it right over to Dolores, since I know she has short time, because she's a busy parent.
I don't get a cool CAG, um, you know, like, this is Dolores, and she is, you know, one of our CAG partners. It's okay, I'm here, you know.
We want to use your time, because I know you got to leave at 6:15.
I do, and so, thank you all for allowing me to come on and be amongst the great elite accountability partners that understand the importance of making sure that our elected officials are operating in a very transparent way, but also operating with a level of integrity and accountability, since we, you know, elected them into these positions. So, we elected you based on a platform that you stood for to do the work, right? Not to think that this would also be a unpaid, part-time job where we are having to hold people accountable. And so, as a parent partner, and today I'm going to wear the parent hat, and sometimes I don't like to come in first with the title of parent, because people like to discount my worth, right? They discount my knowledge, skill, and ability. They discount my awareness of what's happening. And what I will say is, I've been doing this for over a decade, which is understanding my role as a partner in education, you know, following the school board, listening to the meetings, attending the meetings, and advocating. And for me, it is important, because if I elect you into that seat, you don't get to speak from your voice. You have to speak from the voice of the people. And the only way you get to speak from the voice of the people is if you engage with the people. And I know a lot of times, people are pushing for the superintendent to be gone. They need to get rid of the superintendent, but we don't hear enough about people getting rid of elected officials. And we need to be more intentional about understanding about the role of the Board of Education and them being a governing group, who is supposed to have oversight in what the operations or what the operations are happening in our school system. And if the superintendent, we're going to use special education. If a parent is upset or frustrated about their child's IEP not being followed, right? We bring the concern up to the superintendent, the teacher, the principal, then it goes outside of that to the superintendent and his team. We send a message to the board. The board should also be getting back to the superintendent and their team. And there should be some type of tracking mechanism. So then, at that point, the board should be identifying with the school, how did the school address it? What were their follow-up? What were the action plans? Because they are responsible for governing the work of the superintendent and his team. And so, after the past couple of days, or the past couple of weeks, in attending ABFA meetings, which are the Board of Education Budget Committee meeting to discuss all things budget, as well as the work sessions for the budget that they had that were only virtual, I will not say that it was disheartening not to see a lot of parents, because it was also not transparent about the meetings being advertised, because just posting a meeting on Word docs is absolutely not enough. But I need parents to understand that the board has introduced amendments. And once the board introduces an amendment, and if we already have a deficit, a deficit means that we don't have any money left to spend. So, if a board member says, "Well, guess what? I would like to introduce this amendment that's going to cost $500,000 to plant a garden at a school", albeit, it may be a great idea. But the reality is, how are you going to pay for it? So, when you introduce an amendment that is not aligned with the standards, there's a, and thank you, Tanya, and you can jump in here at any time, when we were talking the other day about the state plan. And there are, what is it, five areas in the state plan? Academic achievement, academic progress, graduation rate, progress in achieving English language proficiency, and school quality of student success. If we are not meeting the mark or meeting the indicators on the state plan, then maybe that school garden is not the best way to spend $500,000. But if you have $0, how are you paying for it? And so, when parents are upset because their child's individual educational plan may not be addressed, and we may need resources for that, but a board member is saying, "We're going to spend $500, because I think it's a good plan, because one of my constituents", or they'll say constituents. Well, how many constituents did you speak to as it relates to this garden? And one person is not indicative of the multiple people that you were representing in your district. And I'm going to put a pause on that one, so you all can ask me anything, because I can do this all day.
Yeah, now, I'm just getting to Dolores' point, because like she said, we were both digging into, what are the priorities for the budget? And we see they're in black and white. Our school board is not following those policies. There was, as Dolores mentioned, a meeting held on February the 20th. It was a meeting rescheduled from February 12th. So, when you're rescheduling a meeting, the meeting is just rescheduled. Nothing else is supposed to change, no time or anything. Well, they changed the time of the meeting, and what, we got our email messages the same day. Yeah, we got it that morning, that the meeting time had changed. So, of course, when I got called and said, "Tanya, they're calling your name", I'm still at work. The meeting's supposed to be at seven. No, they changed the meeting to a 5 o'clock public meeting for the hearing, the budget hearing, and then a unscheduled work session at 6:00 that nobody knew about, where they introduced amendments to the budget after being told the day before, at the ABFA meeting, that the CFO, who did her job, had closed the budget deficit. She'd made the cuts to close the budget deficit. And then, here comes the board members acting like they're CEOs of some company, saying, "Well, we want to add another $10 million, or add these other expenditures." And $10 million was it?
So, the net for the ad that day, what they voted on was 600, I got the exact number, you know I got the exact number, was 626,053. And so, then they proposed to move the other amendments to the meeting that will be coming up Thursday to discuss, right? And when I spoke at that meeting, I spoke about the lack of transparency. Like, I'm degreed in finance. That's the work that I do. And so, when I'm reading this budget book, and I'm familiar, very familiar with budget books, I was just like, why am I so confused? Like, I don't understand that 1 plus 1 equals 2. But when I'm looking at this budget book, 1 plus 1 wasn't equaling 2. And that's the argument that I had with the superintendent side.
And not only that, but there is a, what, $30 million structural deficit that the school system is facing? If I recall that meeting correctly.
So, it was 37, 37 million, but that doesn't include the 20 million that may be lingering out there based on whatever unfunded mandated legislation that comes, right? But then, you have the board members who are also putting in unfunded mandates. And an unfunded mandate is when you don't have the funding to cover your request. And as I said to them, I said, "Look, I need you all to understand, this is not personal, that I'm taking a personal tack on a board member, but it's personal for me, because it's my child. But if you are in your feelings, because I'm holding you accountable, but this is not the job for you. This is not the place that you got to learn on the job. You advocated for a vote. You had a strategic plan and knocked on doors. You raised money. So, there is something that you do understand about managing finances. So, then, when it comes to the larger scale, I need to see that same skill set at work.
But see, that's a problem.
You got to figure it out.
Across the entire county, if I'm going to be honest with you, the fact that all the mandates, the unfunded mandates, you know, we see that at the council level, they're spending records, you're doing that, the spending affordability committee says, "Hey, you know, it's not good for the bar rating to have all these unfunded mandates, or to use these one-time purchases, especially at such a large number, which we do them at." You know, we have to, I love a community garden, and you know, all those other things. I think those programs are wonderful. However, you know, we have to, you know, look at what's most important right now. You know, growing up, my father asked me, you know, when I used to ask myself, he used to say, "Is it a need, or is it a want?"
Right, yep, yep.
Is it a need? Do you need this, or do you want it?
And Sherman, it's not, it's not like you don't have the priorities that are set by the state so that your spending is tied to academic achievements. But when you have board members that, one, are new to the board, aren't taking, they're not taking any time to read anything, but they come up with all of these bright ideas. There was a request to add staff onto the board, to the board office, saying, "Well, our job has gotten harder. You've made it harder, because you've decided to delve out here into operations when you are oversight." So, deal with it. Exactly. If you stay in oversight and not move into operations, you won't need all these people. But you're creating this.
And that's the piece, what I'm saying, and me being on here today to call other parents to the forefront with me to understand, yes, I can sit and watch an ABFA meeting and do 20,000 other things and know what's going on, because that's the world that I live in. That is easy enough for me to do. I am also working to make sure, if I can gather information and synthesize it in a way that can make it easier. But the reality is, what I do know is this, when you make stuff free for people, they're not invested. So, people got to get skin in the game and understand, you don't get to come when it's a problem, because it's too late. People need to be involved, engaged. If you voted for that person to get into that seat, you better hold them accountable. Show up at their chat and choose, send them meetings, invite them to your PTO meetings, ask them why they're not showing up. Because at the end of the day, when they vote, that vote should sound very familiar to the needs of the district that they're serving, but should sound extremely familiar as it aligns with how we are being tracked for success based on this state plan.
Get involved, because this does matter to us. It matters to everybody who pays their taxes, and even people who rent pay taxes too, in Prince Rock County, because they get it from, you know, their rent. Everybody in Prince Rock should be concerned about how money is spent, because quite frankly, if I ask you, "Can I borrow some money?", you're going to want to know what I'm asking for, right? What you going to do with this money I'm giving you? Just like when you get the beggars on the street, you want to know everything they do with the few pennies we give them. So, why not do it for your government?
But that, Sherman, and this is what I keep saying, and everybody keeps talking about the federal, you know, the federal administration, because I'm not saying names, and what they doing. And I'm like, "Well, tell me how that looks any different when what's happening right here on the local level." It's not no different. It's the same thing. And although maybe nobody has come in yet and said to you, "Then, guess what, don't come to work today", oh, but it's coming, because if you sat down, and I went down a rabbit hole yesterday, when I started reading that Republic budget, right? And what they're proposing, they are proposing $50 billion in cuts to education. A 20% cut, 19.7 to be exact, cut for Medicaid. Do people understand what that means and what services are aligned with Medicaid in the schoolhouse? We are not a revenue generating entity. When I, in the world that I work in, I'm saying to my peers, I said, "How do we make money? Well, the government gives us money." I said, "Exactly. They send the money to the states to provide the service. They say to you, it's almost like a contract. I'm a contract out with you to do the service that we don't have the capacity to do." So, guess what? You now have an entity that's come in, who is cutting out the middleman, who is going to bring in a bunch of little contractors to try to do the work from the federal level. So, guess what's going to happen to the governments? The state government, if most of their money came from the federal, they're going to have to do what? How do they make, how do they make money? They raise taxes, right? They raise taxes. The school system can't raise no taxes to get no other revenue in. So, if you don't have the funding, and if they start looking at the state plan to say, "Hey, if you doing what you're supposed to do, we going to give you the money. If we see, you know, increases in your data and your indicators, if they going up, we going to give you the money. If our indicators are not moving, and 2% is not movement to me, right? And when I look at the report card, when I look at the website, and I see that we say all this, "Oh, we're making some incremental changes", well, why are we talking about the changes that we haven't made yet, and what the plan is to address that? That's what I'm looking for the board to talk about. I need the board to say, "Well, you know what, parents? We going to make sure that the superintendent and his team have services and plans in place and hold them accountable for it." Right, that's what I need you all to do.
And not you make up the programs.
Not, right, because that's not what you there for. So, you shouldn't even mean, like, the amendment process has to go away, because it's not a process. There's nothing documented to govern that amendment process that they have in place. They should be making, as we said, Tanya, recommendations
Recommendations.
That align with the gap in the law or the state plan that says, "We're not doing this. Oh, superintendent, we need to make sure, how can we make sure this is covered? And working with the experts that were hired to do the jobs that they've been doing, but hold them accountable."
Right. You can't hold them accountable when you are telling them what to do, how to do it, and then saying, "I'm the board. I'm over you, so you better do what I say."
You know, government would work so much better, if everybody, if everyone just stayed in their own lanes.
Yeah, well, you have to first, you have to first sit down and read the lane that you're supposed to be in. And we have new board members running all around the county and have not sat down to learn policy.
Oh, I mean, in all branches of government.
Well, I know, but we're talking.
Much for the judicial, but definitely.
But yeah, but right now, we're talking about the school system. Yeah, because here's a perfect example. There was an amendment put forth to get rid of a position with no thought that those decisions are tied to collective bargaining. So, you just can't say.
And the law.
Exactly, and you're sitting up here as a board member saying, "Well, I think you should get rid of it." You haven't even done your homework to make that, that decision. Yeah, you can't, or you're saying, "We need another person, because we should be looking like Dade County, Miami Dade." Well, I looked at Miami Dade's school system. Guess what? That is not an apple-to-apple comparison. Miami Dade's school system, their elementary enrollment is larger than our entire school system. So, how is a board member going to come and justify, no documentation, just voicing off a bunch of, rattling off a bunch of stuff, and saying, "We should be getting more people on the board staff to get more support like Miami Dade, because they're number four"? Yeah, but there are things at Miami Dade, and I did my homework. There are things that Miami Dade does for parent engagement that is codified in the law.
I mean, it's a parental right state, so.
Right, right, and that's what, that's what, and we shouldn't have to wait for the law. But we shouldn't have to wait for the law to tell us to engage with people, especially the people who voted you in. But we, let's go back to my point, is that the parents also have to be accountable for their role in being invested in what's happening, not just when there's a problem. And I tell people all the time, I don't like when people say, "Well, parents need to be more engaged." What does that look like? Because it doesn't mean that I have to be at a board meeting every time, but I can send in a letter. I can do a video. I can do a three-minute video message to the board. The reality is, the board, if you're having these meetings, ask your community, you know, what are the topics that they want to hear? You have parent engagement workers in the various schools. Work with those parent engagement workers, and then you can begin to identify what the need is in your community. And so, there are so many ways to be engaged, so you're not really being overworked in a part-time job. And let me say this, I am not in any way, I'm not talking about anybody's intelligence level or anything, because everybody has some type of a level of knowledge, some skills and abilities. They are here, but what I'm saying is, while you are here, we do not have time for you to focus on how you going to get trained for the job. You applied, you got the job, you showed all the skill sets. Well, wait a minute. You ran for it, you raised money for it. So, people entrusted, whatever you say, entrusted their money into your pockets to come and do the work, do the work. But use, use and leverage your community, but community members, I am saying that we have to. We have to engage with these board members, show up at their meetings. If you can't show up, have someone to come out, board members, after your meetings, you know, send out information, share with people what you talked about, you know, letting them know. And like I said to my board member, you submitted amendments. You did not talk about those amendments with your community before you submitted it. Did you talk about those amendments with the chief of academics before you submitted it? And so, and I'll say this, one of the amendments that he put in, it was a good idea. You know, it expanded, you know, resources to one of the lowest-performance schools in the school district that is in our District 7. But the problem is, you cannot put money or ask for money for something that we don't have. We don't have the money. So, we have to then begin to work with, you have a community partnership division. Why are we not leveraging the resources for the community partnership division, who operates like a development director, who goes out and builds relationships with entities, who then can offset some of the costs that we know that we want to do things, but we can't afford it? They can do in-kind donations? You know, there's a, there's a, there's a policy that states the donation level. So, there are ways to get the services that we need, but right now, we are at war. People need to understand, we are at war for dollars, and there are no dollars. But we all fight for the same pennies.
Well, and another, another point I would just like to stress, we are tired of, we get new money every year. And every year, our board is trying to siphon off 2 and 3 and 4 million dollars that should be going to our classrooms. Our customers are in classrooms. They are not in the board office. This has got to stop. And so, we, we're going to be doing more, you know, to share with the public, what are the priorities that our school system is supposed to be following when it comes to setting the budget? So that we not only hold the superintendent accountable when they put forth the initial budget, but we hold our board members accountable when they are not asking the right questions to make sure everything is aligned, and instead veering off into waters that they should not be in, in operations trying to put in their own pet projects. There was one amendment that went in, $10 million to rename our schools, coming from our chair of the board. What is $10 million renaming schools? How is that going to help kids with the reading deficits that we have? How is that going to help with the mental health issues that we have? We, the chief howl made it clear that we have some contingencies on our budget based on what comes out of Annapolis. So, we need to have some money in reserves. That's why the administration is there to do the day-to-day operations. The board has got to back off and get in your lane, and stop acting like you're a bunch of CEOs of an organization. And stop it with all. Well, you know what? Here's another good point. Another thing I looked up with Miami Dade. One of the reasons why they have one of the strongest parent involvement, we used to have this too. They have, for their PTOs and their PTAs, they have a county-level body that works on increasing parent involvement, increasing membership through those bodies. We used to have a county PTA, but because of the politics in Maryland, oh, they're trying to get the county PTA.
The meeting is in March.
So, who, but who is it coming under?
It's still coming under Free State. It's coming under Free State.
Well, see, then, we still got to make sure that those politics are not involved with that. So, that's going to be an important part, because we, we were very strong at one point when we had a county PTA, and they didn't like the fact that we were holding people accountable, and they convinced Maryland PTA to get rid of us. So, we got to make sure, that's how, it is not the job of the board to try to increase PTA memberships. That's not the job of the board. We don't have that type of money.
Yeah, we, go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting excited. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
No, and that's the piece, that the board members, and what I need them to know, and as I was saying to our board member for District 7, you know, he's holding our community meeting, right? We have a parent leader meeting, and this is something that we started under, Dr. Harris and I started when he was here. And it brings together all the parent leaders, and so, the, we used to do it that Monday before the board meeting. And he would go over the agenda and say, making sure that everybody knew what the agenda was. If you didn't sign up, if you wanted to come talk, but what are some of the concerns that you are having? Because, you know, he's talking individually, but it's also good when we come together collectively to talk about some of the things that are going on. So, it's not always something that actually needs to rise up to the top, right? But the board members need to understand, yeah, many of them are having their community chat and choose, right? But what I also see, and I'm going to use a board member, Walker. She has a monthly, you know, meeting. She usually has a lot of good information. She had one that went over what happened in the ABFA meeting, as well as the work session. When you go back to look at her YouTube video, it was two people, two people that viewed it, right? It was two people that showed up for it. And so, you know, again, people have to get involved and engage with their board members to let their board members know what they need and what's happening. And in no way, this cannot be done in a silo. The board member, as I say to them all the time, you all have a group of individuals that will help you make sure that the school system is educating our children. But what we won't do is help you take our money for your own personal little job, little pet projects. I will not help you, and I believe that everybody has the right to have some aspiration to go somewhere else and, you know, be promoted up or out, but you won't do that as using my child as a piece on your checkers board, because y'all not playing chess. And so, I'm not here for none of that. I got one minute. My son just jumped in the car. But I just want to say, I appreciate what you all do. And as I say to people all the time, everybody's like, "Oh, thank you for what you do." You don't have to thank me. How about you join me? I need more voices out here, and I always say to people, "I'm not going to them and say, 'You better do this, and you better do that.' I'm always going, I present what the problem is, identify some solutions. I tell them what my capacity is as a parent partner to support the work, and then I leave an open question. And then I leave an open question, and what are you going to do? Because at the end of the day, I know my role, I don't need you, and I'm not dependent upon you to educate my child. I'm dependent upon you to partner with me, to ensure that my child is educated. Because you can't keep telling me I'm my child's first educator, but keep leaving me out the educational process. So you don't need to invite me to the table, I have built the table by giving birth to the child. So now I'm saying to you, while we at the table, I'm going to hold you accountable, I'm going to hold you accountable, I'm going to hold me accountable, I'm going to hold my child accountable. Because at the end of the day, if we not going to work together, then I'm going to need you to go ahead and go run somewhere else, find you another position to run. I don't care what you do, but you not, I, they have woken up the hairy tummy in me for black. And I, I just want to do fun stuff, you know what I'm saying? I want to go to my schools, you know, wax museum and look at my child walking around and my son doing stuff with. I don't even know what they do in high school, because I, I don't even know. But I'm just saying, I want to do fun stuff. I don't want to be sitting here like, hey, y'all don't have a right to be putting another nine million dollars on top of the budget and bloating the budget. Oh, I'm sorry, you don't have a right to spend what I don't have, oh, I'm sorry, you don't have a right to spend a dollar twice.
And just to wrap, you know, put a button on this, because you, Dolores has been doing a lot, she and I have been looking at this budget. Um, a- and parents, you know, I, I know it's hard to follow the budget because we don't get as much information like we used to. And I think that's something else we're going to have to push for, that when the budget is given to the public. I remember when the budget was almost like seven or eight hundred pages, because we were given full explanations about every dollar we were spending, how, how things were tied to positions. We were even given position descriptions. We need to get back to that, because there are priorities set for our budgets based on the state uh that, that are uh set by the state rather, and they determine how we will look on our report card going to the state. And there was a comment made by uh last year during legislative session by our former county executive, when they were talking about moving the telecommunications. Exactly, and 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 a comment that was made, well, every time we get new money, the, the board spins it up before it gets to the classroom, and here you are. You have done the exact thing that was said.
You proved the point.
Exactly, you put all these amendments in that didn't, one, you, you put in and nobody thought to understand. You can't defund something the law says you have to fund. That just requires a little reading, but you set up here because you're too far into operations. So we want to try to help parents to get more on board with this budget process. We're, we're at the end of it, because tomorrow they're going to vote. There should be no amendments passed by this board.
Especially since that Republican budget.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Because we're going to have to find money to make up for the special education money that we're, we're, we'll be losing.
Yeah, and and the thing, and then I'm going to leave on this, I, I will say this, it, you know, what we have to make sure, like you say, in advocating for a very transparent process. And I, I will give, you know, the board members, like I said to them, I said, I was a da, a day late and a dollar short. Y'all, y'all asking for line for line on the meeting, and I know, I, I do know, because you were on a meeting with um, with uh Board Member Moss for that community meeting that he had, and we were saying, hey, you need to have something that's clearer. So I do know that it was asked, so that's where we also, as a community member, that's how the board leverages our voice, right? That's how we push to make sure that that accountability with presenting a document that is real, right? That is a, a living document, every time you all are deciding to make changes and updates, I don't need to see the same document in December and y'all made the twenty, thirty changes to it, it don't align. Because then when I'm now advocating, I'm like, well, wait a minute, what should I be advocating on that this still exists? Well, I'm going to go ahead, because my speech is already written, because I, you know. So I just, I, we, they have to understand how powerful our voices are. And I'll say this, it only takes one or two of us, right, to get the word out. But it does take a little bit more of us to start this movement to moving. And so my son is over here, he's so nice, he's so kind, he didn't even breathe hard, he didn't sigh one time, so I'm going to go ahead and leave. And um, you know, I, I, I appreciate you all. And um, let's, let's keep, let's keep going, let's keep holding people accountable, and I, you know, thank you for the work that you all do.
Sherman, we have the letter that um, that um, Dolores put together for parents that who may not be able to make it, but may want to send something, a testimony to the board. Because um, Chief Howell has done her part. Um, I, I understand that the board had more questions, but they spent their ti, they didn't spend their time asking questions. They kind of spent their time doing other things, but right now, she has a plan to close this thirty-seven thousand deficit. Thirty-seven million, yes, thirty-seven million. But there is a contingency, and that is based on what happens um at the state level. So one of the things that we need to do is, first of all, let these board members know, no extra money. The board gets no extra money. Whatever money we have needs to stay near the classroom, near our students, near our customers, our scholars. They are the ones that need the money. We need to also remember, we have parents that are losing jobs. So those days of ca, calling parents, asking for Kleenex and Xerox paper and pencils and, and other things. That could be going away, because you have parents who have lost their jobs and they now have to figure out how to pay their own bills. So we don't have that, that supplemental help coming from the parent community. We have to stop spending. And that is what a good leader does. So I am appealing to the Chair of the Board. Talk to your members, and you all take those amendments and you kill them. Uh, all of this extra work that you're saying you have to do, you don't have to do. Just stop thinking that you're the CEOs of the board and you have to do the operations, ask the questions of the administration. If the administration does not get back with you and do their job, that is how you hold them accountable. And especially when you do the evaluation of the, of the superintendent.
Because um, it's along the subject of what we're talking about, and this is going to impact Prince George's County. I wish I had a breaking news setup, like I have before. Uh, but the Associated, uh, Associated Press is reporting that uh, the Trump administration has issued a memo directing federal agencies to plan for sweeping layoffs of government employees. So we'll see how that pans out for Prince George's County with sweeping layoffs.
Well, isn't the number right now close to uh fifteen hundred that it hit Prince George's County and Montgomery County, I think I last saw?
I haven't checked it.
But, but the, but we need to understand, we need to deal with the money that we have. Uh, board members, you're going to have to sit down, read some policies, do some reading so that you can do your job. And uh, and understand also, when you have committees and your committees have finished their um purpose. Um, and it becomes operations, you turn it over to the school system, it doesn't stay a board initiative. Once it becomes operations, you turn it over to the school system. And it is now done by the administration. And I guarantee you, board members, when you stop trying to do operations and you focus on oversight, you'll be able to have more free time to go to your PTA meetings. You'll be able to have time to engage your, your uh constituents in your district. Stop trying to be the superintendent. You're not CEOs of the board, you are board members designated to provide oversight. What was that, um?
I said, and their administrations.
So, we do have a board member posted on our page. Levon, you, you were going to say something?
Well, I guess it's time for the hot topics.
Some hot topics, yes.
But I do have a couple of thoughts. Um, one is, I'm glad I don't have children in PGCPS anymore.
Me too.
I care, but from a distance, what's that, from a distance, we are, yeah. And so um, that's that comment. Somebody used to always criticize the council members and say they thought they were junior county executives. I think that our school board thinks that they're junior council members and they want to be a part of the decisions that impact the county beyond the things that they swore into office to do. The third thing I want to say is, we've been through some of this before, and it was back in two thousand two when we uh s- sat down and appointed bu, board, a fully appointed board. Because of mishandling of monies, bad policy, decision-making, infighting, et cetera, et cetera. And I was a parent and I just brought my son into the school system. And those were the best years of my parental life in PGCPS. Because we didn't have to deal with people trying to posture themselves as concerned leaders and advocates and activists, and they just showed up, listened to what the superintendent had to say. Make, voted on the, on what they needed to vote on, and kept it moving. They weren't calling principals to say, I didn't get a mug like you gave to so-and-so. Or don't suspend my, 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 um, what was the one I had? Don't suspend my donor's um child. I don't care what you do about the other kids, but don't expel my donor's child. So we don't go through that with appointed members, and you know, and I'm on record, I never liked the hybrid board either. And so y'all keep on here, y'all keep on, we going to get back in appointed board if, if y'all keep on. Um, either by clink, clink, necessity or by policy. And then the last thing I want to say about this.
When you became a prophetess?
Hashtag block the block PGC. That's B L O C K T H E B L O C P G C. That's my new hashtag, because these uh progressive rebels, the block, have gotten on my nerves. All right, and that leads us into hot topics. So speaking of um elected people, polls opened today for early voting in Prince George's County. As we have folks seeking the seat of county executive. And in Council District Five, we have folks um seeking to be the next council member for that area. If you go to www dot princegeorgescountymd dot gov, you can find the early voting sites. There you can get a ballot, or you can put your ballot that was received by mail into the drop box that's located outside of the facility. Um, there are several around the county. And then we have another issue about voting for the county executive. As you all know, Council Chair Jolene Ivy ran for the at-large seat and was seated in that from the District Five seat in November, which then caused us to have to have the special election for the District Five seat. And then she ran, decided she wanted to be county executive, so she threw her name on the ballot for county executive. Well, a week or so, ten days ago.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we have this correct. She never intended to run for county, I mean for um at-large, she always wanted to run for county executive.
And to do a lot of things too, and I, I'm very uh decisive about what I choose to do and don't do. So yeah, she said she, she didn't really want to be, but she was being petty and didn't want uh Mayor of Bowie, Tim Adams, to win the seat. So she, she care about y'all though, right? She cares. Um, and so what she did was, something happened, we don't know what happened. She said it was for personal, financial and health reasons or something like that, that she was suspending her race. Um, and so people are up at arms because at la, as of a couple of days ago, forty-five thousand plus ballots had been cast, meaning the Board of Elections has received them and the counting has started. And so her name, of course, is already on the ballot, as is that of the Bladensburg, I mean, sorry, the Chevrolet mayor who withdrew her name from the race, but there wasn't as much hoopla about her. But there's much hoopla about Jolene Ivy, because she was kind of number two, number three, depending on the poll. I'm going neck and neck with uh former county executive candidate, Rashard.
I wonder how um, the mayor feels about having to drop out because of the lawsuit and then, you know.
Well, we can't assume that she dropped out because of the lawsuit.
Oh, I must have read the article wrong, I thought it, oh, I think it said uh, the next day she got the lawsuit or something like that.
That whole messiness around Hospital Hill project at the whole, at the old hospital site in Chevrolet. Um, you know, we were able to have that conversation with the Council Chair Jolene Ivy. And she mentioned something about the developer saying that he had, they asked um the Chevrolet mayor not to pursue annexation of the hospital property until after the development was done. And you know, there wasn't a follow-up question, which is probably a good thing that there wasn't a follow-up question, because I think that there might have been a little ex parte there. And so we are waiting eagerly to hear the, the reasons behind the suspension, withdrawal, resignation from the, the race. Um, the Board of Elections per.
Can I just say something before we uh continue on about expectations and stuff like that? I'm still waiting for that report from Calvin Hawkins, from Council Member Hawkins. I have reached out to his office, I've called and I've sent out the email. Um, I said, I'm sending out the email prior to a couple of days ago, and I haven't got that one. But I did that only to that large email, so I was like, okay, well, let me actually email the constituent services person, because obviously, that probably might be the person who I need to uh speak with about that. Um, I haven't received it yet, I'm still waiting for it, so as soon as I do, you know, I'll definitely break that down and give you all the information on how we responded to COVID. I'm sorry, I just wanted to have it received though.
Oh, that's okay, because I need to go back in my emails and find the email um follow-up from the visit that Mr. Hawkins made to my community, that he's never followed up on the things I asked about, but he responds.
I didn't want to beat up on him, I was just saying.
I don't care, I'm saying it, I'm saying it. Folks got, folks coming at me, talking about I'm biased, or at us saying that we're biased and all that stuff. We're just here to present information and facts, and then we do have our personal experiences. And so I'm just saying, when you say something, be truthful about what you're saying, because we got receipts. So if we decide to pull out the receipts, don't be mad at us, because your people, you know, tell them to back off, because we're here to serve. And we do this without any paycheck. Okay, so anyway, um, I just wanted to say that um candidate Tanya Sweat um went in hot pursuit on this issue about what happens with the votes that were cast for Jolene Ivy. And she finally got a written response from Ms. Ivy, I mean, I'm sorry, not from Ms. Ivy, from the Board of Elections. Um, and it basically said that none of the votes would be counted, they would all be tossed out. There was no law cited as to why we could not, um, they could not be done as spoiler votes. Meaning that you could go to the, a vote, a voting site or the Board of Elections and request a provisional ballot to change your vote. Um, I went online and I saw that in presidential races, you are able to do that. I don't know why we can't do it in the Maryland races or in the county races, but as we have said before.
I've never heard that.
Yeah, I looked it up, and it said there's spoiler things, and I think um, the Baker camp even put something out about it too. Uh, don't quote me on that, but I thought I saw something, and um.
See, I mean, if it's a federal thing, then it probably may only speak to the federal.
Federal election, it may be the case, but. Yeah, and so my thing is, the Board of Elections has taken their sweet time answering questions of, from the constituents, including the question that I posed, how long ago about? Including the question that I posed, how long ago about David Murray illegally putting himself on the ballot last year. And we still haven't gotten an answer. So I am calling on the county council. It might be a little conflict of interest and people might need to recuse themselves. But we need a charter review. I'm calling on whoever the next county executive is. We need a charter review and we need.
I thought there was a committee that does that, because I know um, I, I would love to be on that. I'm gonna try to, they might say, no.
But they have to say, I think they have to name a committee and with the transition of, of people.
I think there's already one in present, uh, uh, presence already.
Right, but there may be new members going forward with the next administration. So whatever it is, they have to call for specific um study, a sp- specific um topics or whatever it is. Y'all know what I'm trying to say, okay? We need a new, a charter amendment and we want these people to stop running for these seats. As they are collecting a check for another seat, because they're not doing the work that needs to be done, because their staff is out. We're, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to, I'm not supposed to say that. Okay, alright, so let me stay on task. So it's, we need that. And we need a new Board of Elections, okay? Because we need people who know what they're talking about and we need responsive, timely um folk who know what they're doing. Okay, number three, we have the Target boycott that's underway. It was called on um to action by the pastor Jamal Bryant. And he has tied the Lent season, which is celebrated by Christians, to a forty-day fast. Or a boycott of Target. If you go to targetfast.org. Um, you will find all the information that you need to sign up so that you can get information on how um this process is working. Basically, they just want people to not spend their money at Target, because Target renege on their um diversity. Um, um, oh shoot, what's it called? D E I.
Equity and inclusion.
Equity, that's, I always forget the E. Equity and inclusion policy, which was.
That's what they want you to forget too.
To people of, alright, to people of color and to women and to LGBTQIA+ creatives. Um, putting their products in their stores. And they were quick to backtrack on that in January. After you know who took his oath of office. So we give a shout out to uh Pastor Bryant and Reverend Al. And uh I saw a meeting that he posted about with Attorney Ben Crump. And um they were meeting today in Detroit. And so I'm excited about all that's gonna come. And people were criticizing, saying, well, what about more than just Target? And he was like, listen, you have to start somewhere. Reverend Al has his own um initiative that's going on. And so next week, I'll feature that one. And then the last.
Can I say something real quick? I, even though it hasn't gone into effect, but I have seen the, that, the results of it. Because uh in Virginia, there is a Walmart that is next door to a Costco. And I saw the Costco was packed. And usually that Walmart is packed. And you did not have as many people in Walmart that you usually see. And I also heard that Apple shareholders today said, no, we're, we're rejecting the plan to get rid of D E I. So the pressure works.
Yeah, and I have to admit, y'all, I'm a Target shopper. I gave up on Walmart several years ago. And then I would sneak in every now and then. And then last year I was going there and I, I, I haven't been in months. And then Target, I stopped going in like December after Christmas. I haven't been back. I miss it. I ain't gonna.
What about a freshen chicken?
So the next topic of discussion, but I'm doing better. I'm not going as often. And I only get a kid's meal. So I'm doing better. Um, and so, and then my last point that I need to make for Hot Topics is we have been putting out a call to feature nonprofit organizations or not, or advocacy leaders, people who are out in the community doing good work. And so if you would like to submit the name and information about an organization, please do so by sending us an email at C for Citizens, the number four A I P G C at gmail dot com. Because next week, we're going to start with one, our first feature. Because as uh Ms. Delores Milhouse said, we're partners in this. We're not doing this by ourselves. You all are, some of you are boots-on-the-ground kind of people. And you in these streets, not the internet streets, not the keyboard advocates, not the keyboard critics. But you're actually out here touching the lives of those who need your voice, your resources, your um goods and services.
There's a hundred and twenty-something ways or, or plus of nonviolent uh protests. So definitely, you know, if you're not somebody who can show up, you know, you can also support those who are showing up.
Right.
But we definitely, like uh Fanny Lou Hamer say, don't be, don't, don't, don't hammer back. Don't be uh behind me, be next to me, be beside me. I don't want you way behind, because you might turn around. But um, the, the, um, we, we thank you so much for those hot topics, Levon. I would truly appreciate it. We do have our next guest on. And speaking of someone who was a, um, a fearless fighter for justice. Um, we're gonna bring Nikki Owens um on to talk about some um prosecutorial misconduct within Prince George's County. Um, but also, before that, I do want to give an update to the Keith Washington um situation. And let you all know that there is no update. Um, the state's attorney office hadn't gotten back uh with the attorneys regarding uh the exoneration. I recently spoke with um Jonathan uh who is Keith's attorney. And he says that uh there is no update. If I was to surmise of my own uh opinions, I would assume that we have to wait until after all the po- uh politics play out in elections and stuff like that, at least I hope. You know, it's such a sensitive subject uh due to a lot of the names that were mentioned. Um, you know, and quite frankly, it shocked the hell out of me, I'm going to be honest with you, um, as I was watching. Uh, but you know, so I can imagine how relationships and situationships within uh these individuals are making it difficult to get Keith exonerated.
Well, I just want to add one thing, um Sherman, and we thank you all for sharing our links and, and putting our work out. But I also wonder, and you know, this is not for discussion. I'm just putting it out because I know Mr. Newton watches us. I, I would like to see more activity around this case. I'm a person that I'll show up with a sign.
Well, I, I think we have to wait, you know, and see what the client actually wants as well.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, if I can finish, I know that it's a sensitive subject. But I also know this is a long time that he's been waiting. And people have been asking.
Two years since he got out.
Right, people are asking me, why don't they see this on the, the mainstream media? And how can they rally for support? I know there was a petition. But just so you know, Jonathan Newton and Keith Washington, people are we- ready to join arms and to really push this out. But if you wanna do this the way you're doing it, we respect that. I just need people to know, it ain't that we ain't asking. Or we haven't thought about it. We just trying to respect what, what uh Sherman said about, it's up to the client.
Well, uh, well, you know, I think he's pushed the petition even on his page. I, I would, I would implore or ask the people, get involved and ask the state's attorney to sign the uh, the paperwork to vacate his wrongful conviction, just that easy.
Say, I um, on behalf of the PG Observer, reached out to the state's attorney's office um to request information um or the status of the exoneration for Keith Washington. Um, I am waiting for a response. I, I, I'm not gonna say like it's been forever since I did, that I did, you know, do that earlier today.
But we're asking our listeners. We're asking those who are hearing our voices now. Ask, you, you.
I think it's fair that we get input from the state's attorney's office as well. So that's, you know, kind of why I did that. Uh, you know, not to.
Yeah, but he's already, they're not, he's already told us the story. Uh, his attorney is always, has already told us all that needs to happen. And that is the state's attorney just signed the paperwork to say his conviction is vacated. So let's start asking the state's attorney to do it.
Alright, and thank you so much. On this uh episode of CAG, we're joined by Nikki Owens, the cousin of William Green, to discuss the ongoing fight for justice and accountability in Prince George's County uh with her family. William Green, as we know, was handcuffed and unarmed when he was shot and killed by a county police officer in twenty twenty. Um, the uh case raised questions about prosecutorial decisions and police accountability and systemic failures uh within our justice system. Uh, and Nikki has been a tireless advocate. And today we're diving into the allegations of prosecutor misconduct in this case and the broader implications. Nikki, thank you so much for joining us. Uh, can you walk us through uh what happened in your fi- uh, your fight for your, your cousin?
Hi Sherman, thank you for inviting me. Um, yes, um, this has been a long, a very long five years. It's been a long, hard five years and it's been a very educational five years. Um, I don't think I've ever trusted the government, but this five years has taught me that I was right to not trust our government. Um, my cousin was handcuffed. And um, he was in a car accident. So I want to make it clear, he was not committing a crime. He was not um robbing someone. He was in a car accident. Um, he did not try to flee the scene. In fact, when they ca- when they went to his car, he was asleep. Um, they had to do a sternum rub to wake him up. Um, they, he cooperated. Video shows he cooperated. He didn't struggle. He didn't pull away. He allowed them to take him out of the car. They searched him and then um handcuffed him. And Michael Owen walked him to his police car. He was not the first officer on the scene. And he didn't even dispatch to the scene. He was in fact at another scene. When he heard that this happened, he didn't dispatch and say he was on his way. He just showed up. Um, I do believe that he knows my cousin. Do I know? I don't know how. But I've had many sources tell me that they knew each other. Um.
And was this known to anyone um at the time? You know, anyone having this case?
This, I did not, people reached out to me after the case, because people were shocked that this man was acquitted. That he, that he was found not guilty. They could not believe it. And so they started reaching out to me and asking me what happened. Like, didn't they know this? Telling me things I did not know. They just assumed that during an investigation, they would find these things out. They did not. Um, so that night, he, he took my cousin to his vehicle. My cousin was unarmed. My cousin was nonviolent. My cousin was sitting in the front seat of the car during the trial. Everyone said that my cousin was sitting facing forward. Even his own partner during the trial said that he pulled up. My cousin was facing forward and he parked his car right behind Michael Owens, where the back of their cars were right there. He never saw my cousin struggle. And within, he said within seconds. Then he changed it to minutes, but he was like, within seconds, he heard gunfire. So he's, the witness said that my cousin was facing forward during the trial. Now here's the kicker. When the witnesses testified, I went out through, when they left, I went out and talked to them. They never contact, they had four years. This happened in two thousand twenty. They never contacted the witnesses until late spring of twenty twenty-four, right before the trial. They never.
We know how bad it is because memory fades. You know, um, that has been testified in cases, you know, in so many cases that, you know, witnesses lose credibility as time, you know, progress.
Mm-hmm. Well, the video for, there's so much. So he places, he, he fired seven shots. One shot went to the backseat. Six shots were directly into my cousin. The gun was actually touching, pushing up against my cousin's skin. The, it burnt his.
They were able to get the residue and, and burns as well.
It burned his skin. He murdered my cousin. He shouted, he exploded his heart. He murdered my cousin. There wasn't a struggle. When he got, there was video that showed him when he got out of the vehicle. There was pictures. There was no signs of a struggle. There was no signs of a struggle in the car. The weird part about it is during the trial, somehow the man who, the, the tech who took the pictures, somehow his pictures got mixed up with another crime scene pictures. So the state's attorney's pictures got mixed up somehow with another case. So then they had to come back and he had to say, these aren't my pictures, no. But hold on, here's the thing. The pictures got mixed up on the state's attorneys, in the state's attorneys, um, their evidence. But his attorney was the one that pointed out that those were not the right pictures. And the guy was looking at him. You could tell he was looking at them and he was, they was asking him questions about the picture he was looking at. And that's what he was answering. But he kind of noticed something was off too. So mix up of evidence. They accused me of having a tape of the shooting and not giving it to them. They accused me of that. And then they did not question when their, his attorney agreed to have said that that should be admitted as missing evidence. The state's attorney did not say, no, you can't admit evidence that never existed as missing evidence. They did not argue. They allowed it. They allowed it. Even though I never had, I didn't, I wasn't there at the scene. I didn't take the videos. They never subpoenaed the girl's iCloud to get the videos.
And so was Mi- was Michael Owens, was he convicted?
N- no, he was found not guilty. And he was found out guilty because they never, when we, after, before they submitted the indictment, they had the family come into their office. And they told us, we are charging him with second-degree depraved heart murder. This is what they said to us. I remember because I looked it up. And we were asking, why not first-degree murder? If it was one of us who did it, you would throw first degree, second degree, third degree. You would throw everything in the book. No, they told us they couldn't do that, which we knew was a lie, but we couldn't do anything about it. They never actually charged him with second-degree depraved heart murder. They built an entire case around it. They built their entire case around it, but the indictment, it was never in the indictment. In April of twenty twenty-four, I believe it was the, the hearing we heard, went to in April. The judge said, these are very unusual charges. I've never seen charges filed like this. These are very unusual. The way that you file these charges. All of this, I, I had transcripts of all the hearings and all of the, and the trial. That judge was really seriously like trying to indicate that this was not right.
So you don't believe the state's attorney office supported enough or it wasn't, you don't believe that they prepared your case? Uh, because.
They had four years and they, they have four years. They did nothing in four years. They did not try, they did not test evidence until twenty twenty-four. Spring of twenty twenty-four. I think one thing, ballistics testing, they did not do until um, I think October. Here's, they never questioned the fact that in his, in his use of force report, which I have a copy of. He stated that the suspect attempted to take his weapon and he fired. He never said my cousin touched the weapon or anything. He said he attempted. They never questioned that his statement on, in the court contradicted his use of force statement. They never even questioned it.
Were there, were there any plea deals or sentencing negotiations or?
They tried to give him several plea deals where he would, he would spend less than five years in prison. There was even in the hearing, they even stated the, his, his um defense. After my cousin was shot, the PG training facility, the PG police training facility did scenarios to see how this could actually happen. They did multiple scenarios. I don't know how many, but several scenarios where they need, where they were trying to figure out, how would my cousin be able to get that gun out of, out of the um holster. The holster was not damaged. The, the, the experts for the holster said there was no damage. It's a two, you have to do two moves to open the holster to get the weapon. Um, he, there, there was no damage. There was no damage to the police officer. There was no damage to the car. There was no damage anywhere. Um, they did not test the holster until spring, till late spring. They tested nothing. They did nothing until twenty twenty-four. They just kept trying to give him plea deals. Then they emailed his attorney, the scenario.
Say they, who was, who, who are they?
Jason and, Jason, um, one, the two state's attorneys, Jason and uh I'm sorry, I'm old in my memory. It just slipped my mind. But the two got, the two prosecutors.
Uh, Prince George's County.
Prince George's County prosecute, Prince George's County prosecutors, Jason and um, uh, I want to say Doc. There was actually four on the case. Originally Renee Joy, Jonathan Church. They left. We never even knew they left. They didn't call us. They didn't notify us. They were just gone. And then they put Jason and Joey, Joel on the case.
And did you ever make any complaints about, um, the, the way communication was or?
Oh, we made, we made many complaints. We had a whole press conference and during the press conference, they came outside to get me to have me come talk. But let me explain one thing. Two press conferences I had, two times Ayesha sent a message to me telling me not, that I better not say anything negative about her. Twice. Before the first press conference, she sent that message to me, letting me know I better not say anything bad about their office. And I said everything that I possibly could bad about their office.
Well, did I say, and, and those words? I mean, are, are you kind of?
No, she told me that I better, I, that I don't need, I better not say anything negative about her, about her. Then in the second one, which was after the trial, when we had the press conference, she sent another message to me, letting me know that I, that I don't need to say anything about her. And I told, and I said, well, you don't have to worry because I'm going to talk about all of you, not just you, all of you. So they never even, they never gave us an advocate for our family. They never talked to us until two thousand and twenty-four, after the initial conversation. They kept, and once the, before they filed the indictment, they didn't really communicate much with us, except for through our attorneys. But they never gave us an advocate. They never gave us anyone we could call to get updates on the cases. They did a lot, they didn't do a lot at all. Um, the biggest thing, the biggest problem that I had with the trial is that you have four years. You never put the charges in there. You built a whole case around charges that you've never even filed. You had four different attorneys on this. Um, and even though for some god awful reason, Prince George's County residents elected a state's attorney with no experience as an attorney, no trial experience, nothing. She should have at least known that they should be looking at that indictment and making sure that everything that they put in that indictment, they were building a case around. So in four years, someone should have noticed the charges were never in the indictment.
So were those from the original, uh, two prosecutors that were on the case that filed those? And maybe they wasn't followed up by, you know, the, the, the team that was, you know, the changeover team? And, and because a lot of times they get bogged down in, in, in the system and they have a lot of cases and.
Sherman, this was a very, this was a very visible case. Like I would, if this was not a very visible case, I would probably agree with you. But this was a very visible case. And when the second attorney showed up and they got the case, they should have first looked at the indictment. That should have been the first thing they did was look at the indictment. How do you build a case and you haven't looked at the indictment? So for me, I just feel like they did everything wrong and they did everything purposely. There's just too many times when the judge made disparaging marks about the things that they were doing. There were just too many things that they never questioned in the trial. Um, they never even, they even submitted the wrong expert witness to the judge. They submitted the wrong, they submitted someone who said, I'm not doing it. They submitted an expert witness that told them point blank, oh, I'm not getting involved in this case. So it's just so many things that they did that was very inconsistent with the facts of this case. Like everyone's like, this is an open and shut case. Yes, it is. This man had many use of forces. When he killed my cousin, the month before he killed my cousin, he abused a family of four. Um, their charges got dropped because it was all on video. He applied for workers' comp. He was on workers' comp for seven years for mental disability when he killed my cousin. He was receiving his police check, his taxpayer dollars and a worker's comp check. And the year before he killed my husband, he went back to the workers' comp board to get it up because he said he had more disability problems, mental, not physical.
So let me ask you, and I think you meant to say your cousin before you killed.
My cousin.
Yeah. Very disturbing. I kind of remember this going on. What are the family's, um, options now to get any kind of? What's the word? Correction to the way the case was handled. You can't prosecute the man again. So, but can you do anything legally about the, um, behavior or the messiness of the actions of the prosecutors?
Um, I'm sure I could file complaints, but the problem is, is that I'm filing complaints with people that she's friends with. People that she's, she's friendly with. Um, Renee Joy went to go work, Renee Joy works for Westmore. If I file a complaint with the people in his office, Renee Joy works there. She's the one that submitted the original indictment. So where am I going to get with that? I did go to the DOJ and after a year of me sending them information, collecting multiple information, sending them packets weekly with additional information, not only pertaining to this officer, but also pertaining to the way the case was handled, they did agree to take the case. So the DOJ did have the case and did agree to take it. Problem, Trump. He stopped all police cases. So last, the last contact I had, they stopped, they had to stop investigating the case.
Wow.
So, no, I've been pushing, like for the last year, I've been pushing. I, when I say every, every, I have spent thousands of dollars on postage, on printing, on different things, getting them information. I've been meeting with people. You'll be amazed at how many people were surprised at this and how many people reached out and how many people were willing to help me get the data that I needed to get to the DOJ. There's a lot of people out there that knows that this is happening. And the thing is, is there's a lot of people impacted. This is not new to my family. She did not just do this to my family. There's other families out there. There's other people out there. She protected this cop because she protected this cop. And there's a lot of corruption that's happening over in Prince George's County.
See, that's what I was about to ask you. Um, you know, and, and your advocacy walk and work, had, had you encountered other cases of prosecution, prosecutorial discretion? Has favor protecting, you know, the system over getting full accountability? And, you know, as you, you were going to go into that, but I just want to hone in on that because you're saying that you met others, not, not only that, but your family was, you know, targeted once, you know, in other aspects of this. Um, and, and how, how does that make you feel? Because you already say you lost trust in the system. So do you feel defeated in that aspect or?
I don't feel, I don't feel defeated necessarily. I'm angry. I'm very angry. I'm angry because I'm fighting people that look like me. That's why I'm angry because the thing is, is they know our history. They know what we've gone through. They know these laws are unfair and they get an opportunity to do the right thing and they do the wrong thing. So am I, am I, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm angry. And I think it's time that we all get angry. There's a lot of families out there that's scared. Like the thing is, is a lot of these people are scared to speak up. They went through the thing, they went through things that my family went through. They didn't get an advocate. They shoved them out. The only reason why they couldn't completely shut us out is because we had an attorney. So they couldn't completely shut us out. But, oh, they tried and they smiled up in our face and they told us lie after lie after lie.
And I wouldn't have, if you had filed any complaints with the bar, but you know, we have done that for other attorneys and, you know, um, it just goes into, you know.
But you know what? This is what's so sad about this because see, this is under a, a new administration, but the same story. Because remember the story of, um, Michael Patopi? The, um, case where kids were being molested at a, at a school and these were kids that had special needs. Most of them were nonverbal. Um, it would, it took a parent, um, methodical, uh, notes of how her child was coming home with his clothes all disheveled over a period of time before, um, and a brave bus driver who came forward that this all came out. And, um, there was a video that the parents were shown of the, this young man. And, and, and granted, they knew that, that this young man also, um, had some challenges of his own. In my understanding also, we were told that he had some, um, abuse when he was younger. But anyway, they, they have on video where they show the action of the child in the front seat. And then this, these parents who I was assisting, their child was in the seat behind. And the, and we have the audio that we have, they, they allowed the parents to tape the audio of the interview. And you hear them saying, oh, don't worry. Even though we don't see him actually with his hands on your child's genitals, we can see he's doing the same action that he did to the child in the front seat. And it's clear as day. So they say it's, it's open and shut case. The video of what he did on, to those kids on the bus, went to the state's attorney's office. And all of a sudden, Brad Bell was the first one calling and reporting this on the news and the parents were shocked. All of a sudden, he was saying that the parents had misidentified um, their child, that that really wasn't their child on the bus. And the video was now grainy and they couldn't really tell what the gentleman was doing. But I have the audio to this day. I still have the audio. I sent it to the inspector general. I sent it to, um, uh, eternal affairs, everybody. And somebody from eternal affairs had started to do the investigation and then he got promoted. And next thing we know, this young man is on a stat document. So he's given probation before judgment. He just got to stay clean for five years. Never prosecuted. After what happened to these kids with special needs that were nonverbal and what happened in the state's attorney's office to just cover up the evidence for why? We don't know. So I believe everything you're saying.
For me, what we went through, it was, and I was there for everything. So, I mean, I wish they would challenge anything that I say because I, I, I was there for everything. Um, there was just a lot of things, even the trial, like there's a lot of things that never came up, like, we're like, why aren't you questioning this? Why aren't you talking about this? Um, just his own statements, his own actions, his partner, like, it's like his partner told you, said these things and you're not even questioning his own partner. Um, he lied. He blatantly lied and they never questioned the fact that he lied, like.
Well, and, 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 and to go ahead and give a defense to that, you understand that we did have a lot of officers who was on the, um, uh, what was the list called again? I, I called it the brave boy list.
The Brady List?
Yeah, that is the Brady List, but I call it the brave boy list, you know, and this has nothing to do right now. But before I was upset because I was like, how can, first of all, how are we allowing these people to still be on the force? And they can't testify in court? You know, if, when the military, if I was not deployable, there was no point for them to have me.
Exactly.
You know, that was something, I mean, that people got waivers, but you know, not for something like this, you know, where there were people who were, um, sexually assaulting, uh, um, there were other people who, um, had did all kind of crazy stuff. And they were still, you know, people who lied and perjured themselves, you know, they were still able to be on the force. And I, I understand that we have a, a lack of officers and maybe they need to be in the, in the back office, that, that desperately. But the fact remains is that we have to start, um, and, and I was getting on this talking about the list. But yeah, I mean, how could you expect her to stay, um, aboard in one hundred about Michael Owens lying when there's a whole slew of officers?
Lying. Oh, yeah. Well, the thing is, is he's under federal indictment. He's under federal, he's going through a federal trial for, um, for reporting cars missing to GEICO into insurance companies. So the week, the week that he killed my cousin, the week he killed my cousin, GEICO contacted the Prince George's County Police and the same officer that has my cousin's case that will not sign off on the, that has not signed off on the, um, on the police report so that I can get a copy of it. He has that case as well. And he investigated that case. He, he, um, subpoenaed his iCloud. He did a whole lot of work for that case after he killed my cousin. He murdered someone and you put all your focus on a, a federal case. The funny part is, is people from her office kept saying, you don't even have to worry about, he's never going to be a police officer ever again. Because they knew about this, but my thing is, is instead of being charged with fraud, I'd rather he get charged with, been convicted of murder. But you focusing on this federal case, they're like, oh, you don't ever have to, he'll never be a police officer. Well, he's under federal indictment. He's going through federal court. He, and he's still a police officer in Prince George's County.
Going up because he around here filed the false reports, but.
Oh, gosh. Exactly.
But yeah, you're absolutely right. Because you know, you're, you're like, I want justice for my family. It's, it's all fine, Danny, that he's going off something else. Stack these charges, okay? You know, because he still needs to face accountability for, you know, as you said, what, what went on with your family. Um, I, I do want to ask though, um, so what structural changes would you like to see, um, happen in the state's attorney's office? And, you know, how, how the judiciary handles cases, you know, of, of your nature or prosecute, uh, and like how Keith, when there is clear prosecu- prosecutorial misconduct? Because I, I don't know if the judges or anybody refer these cases or do anything about it to the bar or anybody else. But you know, the public, it's, it's done a great harm to the public. So what, what are you advocating for at this point with regards to this?
I mean, right now, well, I mean, my stance on it is not a, um, I don't have, I'm not focused on Ayesha. Ayesha's going to get hers. Ayesha's for sale for, to whomever. She's for sale. So for me, mm, I'll deal with her when I can, but the big, looking at the big picture of this, Ayesha is not the only problem. The biggest problem is the entire judicial system. From the police as their bottom feeders, um, to the state's attorney's office, who is there to do what's best interest for the people, but she's not. Um, she is, is, and none, I, I honestly, I can't know any that, that are. They take corporate donations, interest groups as of the FOP donations. Um, they are not, they are not, they are not. They have, they, they serve special interests, period. I don't care. The judges, the clerks, everybody in that office is paid, everybody in the system is paid with taxpayers' dollars. They are not doing what's in the best interest of taxpayers. For me, I feel like they're our employees. We are not your, we're not your employees. You're our employees. So the thing is, is that if you're being paid with our money and I don't live in Maryland, but my federal tax dollars go to Maryland. So you work for me too. And so I just kind of feel like at some point we need a better system that allows us to hold our employees accountable. Right now, we don't. We don't have a system where we can hold our employees accountable. There is no, the system, the federal employees, the state employees, the local employees, they're monitoring themselves. There's nobody monitoring their actions. Why are we going to testify? They want us, our families to go testify for accountability. They want us to go testify for this. My thing is, is, but you know, it's a problem. It's been a problem for hundreds of years. They put a law in eighteen seventy-one that said that we can now sue the police and federal government and state governments because of the violence that was being perpetrated against us. So since in eighteen seventy-one, they knew this was a problem. So why are we in two thousand and twenty-five still trying to get you to hold the people accountable that have been abusing us for, for centuries? Like for me, I just feel like this is a bigger issue and we can chip away at Ayesha and we can get rid of Ayesha, but whoever they put there is going to do exactly the same exact thing. It's like we're just rotating corruption. We're just giving us somebody else the chance to go in there and make their money off of our bodies. Since the, since the beginning of this government, since colonization, our black bodies have been the most profitable in this country, the most profitable commodity, and it still is. They just hide that fact, but it still is. So for me, holding Ayesha accountable, holding her office accountable, anything if we don't fix, so it's kind of hard for me to say, this is what I'd like to see because I want the whole system fixed. Like that's what I want. I don't want to hold one person accountable. Multiple people were accountable from the bottom to the top for the murder of William Green and so many other people. My cousin, this isn't even about my cousin. This is about all the people before him and all the people after him. It's not just about him. So I feel like we need to not focus just on one person. We need to start attacking the system because it's not that one person. It's the system that they're allowed to be like this in.
And, and speaking of that, you know, I, I do want to ask, what role do you believe the public can play in pushing for judicial reform and greater transparency, um, and within the justice, uh, judicial system? Because not a lot of us pay attention to what happens in the court or when we electing our judges or, you know, anything like that. You know, so what role do you think that it's time that we do, um, to assist with situations like yours and others?
Um, what I, I think that our education system intentionally keeps us ignorant. I dealt with people all over the, all over the world. And these people all over the world know more about our judicial system and our government than most of the people who live here in the USA. Most of the time, you couldn't even tell them what, they, they don't know what an executive branch is, what a judicial branch is. They have no idea the structure of our government, let alone the structure of their own, of their own. let alone the structure of their own, of their own state. Like I had a conversation, people don't even know that your states have its co- a constitution. Like, most people, if you tell them that, they look at you like you crazy because they only think there's a federal constitution. It's like, no, most states have a constitution as well. The thing is, is we gotta educate people and get them to understand. Exactly. So it's like, they don't understand. And the thing is, is, is because they're comfortable not knowing because it hasn't impacted them. People don't seem to care until it impacts them. And so it's kind of one of those things where we definitely have a people problem, like, I have said this in many hearings, I've said this to many politicians, I've said this to everyone. We don't have a problem with the laws. If the constitutional laws that protect white people protected us, we would need the Civil Rights Act. I don't want a bill to protect me. I want whatever makes white people comfortable walking down the street and not worried about nobody. I want that level of comfort based on the laws that we currently have on the book. We don't have a law problem. We have a people. The people enforcing and implementing our laws are doing it with discrimination. So my thing is, is the people need to realize this. We, people need to be educated and they need to understand that we don't have a law problem. We can, we would need a civil rights act if the people who were implementing the laws were doing it fairly. We wouldn't need, why do you vote every twenty-five years to allow me to vote? Why do you get to sign the document every twenty-five years that says I can vote? People need to understand that the constitution was never written for us and it's not written for us. And if we don't fight back, then we are gonna be in this situation in a hundred years and two hundred years. At some point, we have to say enough is enough.
So in the comments on Facebook, um, someone who is an attorney was saying that if he was never prosecuted for first degree or second degree murder, he can still be tried for those charges and not trigger double jeopardy. So is that a conversation?
That is not a conversation that we ever had because guess what? Ayesha Brave Boy walked out of that courtroom, went to the press, blamed my family and the judge on him getting off and never opened her mouth and spoke to us again until she sent me the message not to say nothing about her in that press conference. So we have not heard from her.
When you say blame. Blame, blame you all how?
Well, I didn't hear the press conference, but I was told that she blamed us and she blamed the judge on him not being convicted. When the simple fact is, is the judge said that the jury could not consider second degree depraved heart murder because it was not in the indictment. His attorney tried to get, said it's not in the, there, he said, they built their whole case around depraved heart second degree murder and they never charged his, oh, his attorney said that. So, yeah, I would love to, I would love for an actual prosecutor, a, ask someone with experience to get in that office and actually prosecute him for, for murder because he shouldn't be on the streets. He shouldn't.
While he's waiting on his, his trial?
He's out, he's out. He's under federal indictment, but he's out.
Charmin, I'm sending you the link. For the press conference. I, I didn't open it up, but I, I did a search on her, on Ayesha name and uh, William Green and press conference, and this is what I got.
And she never, she never mentioned that they never filed the charges. Like, that's one thing I know she's never, she's never taken the blame for not filing the actual charges in the indictment. At all. And tell that attorney, whoever he is, I love to talk to a few, I got a few questions I'd love for him to answer about the state of Maryland if he's familiar. But um, yeah, this whole, this was an open and shut case. This was an open and shut case. The thing, trust me, I sat in every hearing. I even went and had a personal conversation with her. I didn't want to talk about the case. I wanted to humanize my cousin. We sat and we talked for two hours. Me and Ayesha in a room. And when I left that room, I immediately started investigating her, talking to people. Because I knew I could not trust her. I knew I could not trust her after we met. She smiled in my face. She lied. She was fake. It was just her and me. And I was there to humanize my family and I wanted to humanize her. And I told her, the only reason why I wanted to have this meeting with you is because I needed to humanize you. And I said, because I don't like you and I don't trust you. So I'm trying to get a level of trust that you and your off, you and the people in your office are going to prosecute this man and ensure that he pays for what he did to my cousin. And she smiled in my face. But I knew she was lying. So I don't, I mean, I tried to do everything I could to ensure that this man did not hit the streets again, simply because this man beat people. This man has people living in fear every day of their life of him. There is people who, who don't go out their house unless they have to because of what this man did to them. And these are the people that won't speak up, that says nothing, that no one knows about. And unfortunately, what he did with them, it, the time for them to any kind of um, report or any kind of complaint has expired. But there are, he has a lot of victims in Prince George's County. And if he was convicted, I was gonna have them all show up for his hearing. I had coordinated where we, we were all gonna show up.
Yeah, so you still want to get justice?
I mean, and like I said, I'm not, my family is not the only one that's dealt with this miscarriage of justice by the state's attorney. Oh, I am not unique. And I, I, I wish all families would come forward. I wish people would be brave and realize that they can't do anything else that they haven't already done to you. They can't hurt you any more than they've already hurt you. So you don't have to be scared. You don't have to be afraid. There's no reason to. You need to speak up because things cannot. Unless people, people just think it's, it is not this one incident of this happening.
This is like the last frontier when it comes to it, because I mean, we've been advocating uh, for the justice system for so many things, you know, from um, criminal justice reform, uh, prison reform, but not a lot of, like I say, a lot of us have gone, you know, requesting uh, reform within the courts. And I know that there's a group in Prince George's County that was doing court watch here. Um, but overall, I think, you know, it's time. Uh, well, first of all, we need to have transparency with the courts by being able to have cameras in the courses, courts, courthouses. Because, you know, we're, we're one of the only jurisdictions, well, I'm not saying the only, only jurisdictions, but we're one of the uh, gen- um, jurisdictions that don't allow uh, cameras inside the courtroom. You know, you can watch traffic court, you know, in, in other cities. Um, so that, that will increase the level of transparency that we need to work on, but um, it's incumbent upon us all um, to stand up, you know, uh, I'm, I'm, quote often, but Fanny uh, would say, stand up for your constitutional rights. You know, we have to start standing up for our rights and the rights of others because, you know, while we have them.
Yeah, and they need to make things available, like, do you know how much some court transcripts cost me? Thousands. Yeah, it's like, that's ridiculous. Again, your, that office, that paper, that printer, everything was paid for with tax dollars that we paid into. Why do I have to now pay you a thousand dollars for the court transcript? Why do I, not even a thousand. Let me not even make it seem like it's that low. Thousands of dollars for court transcripts. When I've already, I'm paying your salary, I already paid for that ink, I already paid for that paper. Why are you now charging me because you have to transcribe something, but that's your job? Like for me, I just feel like, and have that transcription automatically done. Like, why are y'all hand transcribing things in twenty twenty-five? So I, I really just feel like they, they, victims are victimized constantly by state's attorney's offices. We are victimized, victimized twice. Michael Owen victimized and that state's attorney's office victimized him. Go ahead.
Sorry, um, you went, you led your meet, you spoke right into where I was gonna ask uh, my question, which is, are you part of any family victims justice rights um, organization or, and if you've tried to unite, what has that experience been like? Cause I know everybody who says they're doing stuff aren't necessarily doing it.
What I know, so I do, I do a lot of work with the ACLU, a lot of, I don't deal with the NAACP. They have, they did, they, we're not kind to my family. Um, I do a lot of work with the ACLU simply because I'm trying to educate myself and they allow me that opportunity to educate myself and understand the system better. Because the only way for you to fight a system is to understand it. So they allow me to be able to do that, which I greatly appreciate. I have worked with many families. The one thing I will say in this fight for, for police accountability and for any kind of government accountability, my biggest thing is there's too many chiefs and not enough Indians. Everybody wants to be the voice of this. And the thing is, is until we unite and we can all get on the same front, there's a lot of organizations with a lot of people involved in those organizations. But the thing is, is everybody wants to be the champion of it. Instead of just saying, let's all unite and fight this on a united country, we keep, you, you deal with a lot of people who they want to do it their way. When the thing is, is there is no your way or my way. This is our way. We need to be able to communicate, talk to each other, come up with a plan and attack it in that way. So I've, oh, trust me, I've talked to the people across the, across the country about this. At the UN about this because in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, I can't remember, the UN actually was going to do sanctions against the US because of policing in the US. Now, here's the problem. The organization that brought this about took like a family. I'm like, so you're going to UN, they're giving you a hearing, they're understanding this is a problem and you take a family. There are thousands of us that should have been sitting in that UN, talking to those people. There's thousands of us that should have been on that Zoom. There's thousands of us that should have been involved in that effort and they took a family. They, they minimize it. They minimize it. Just like when the George Floyd bill went up. Who did they take into Congress? Congress could have fit a lot of us and it should have been filled with all of us, but they took a family in there to talk to them. The impact is not there when you take one person or two people. But when you see everybody who's impacted by this, and for me, I feel like we were born in trauma. I'm sorry. We were born in trauma and we have, from the beginning of my days that I can remember, I have been warned about police. We have been, uh, police have been terrorizing us all my life. So my thing is, is we are born in trauma. All of us are impacted by the things that are happening. So you don't have to be a direct. I, you don't have to be directly impacted like my family. You're still acted by what's happening. So I feel like we could take an army in there and talk about this, but they keep taking one family. What, no impact. And that's the problem. Everybody wants to be the chief and they, there's not enough Indians.
So do you have any um, closing remarks? Any last words or any hopes, aspirations? Uh, anything you want to get off your chest, you know?
And any contact information if she wants to leave?
Um, I, I mean, I don't. I don't really have any contact info at yahoo dot com. I don't have, I'm creating a nonprofit. Um, right now, I'm in a, well, it's already been created, but I'm getting the website and things up and it's for community building communities. Um, the point of it is to educate the community and understand like what's happening to you and like people have to listen and people have to understand that this can happen to you. Like what happened to us is not, this is not like a one-off. My family's not a one-off. There are thousands of people across the nation that are dealing with this. And the problem is, is not enough people are talking about it. A lot of people are scared. They're intimidated or they just know that this fight is a hard fight.
I mean, when you have the, the government going against you and can, you know, make evidence and do, you know, as we watch key story, you know, that's why I feel so passionate about it myself, because I'm like, they could do that to any one of us sitting on here on, on this thing right now.
Exactly. And right now, under this new administration, they have to understand this is gonna get worse. This is gonna get worse. And the thing, and what I have a problem with is you could have fixed this. What Trump is doing with these executive orders, you could have done for the good, every precedent. Every, we all could have fixed all of this. Just like this, every, every person who told me it takes time, I told them it doesn't take time. It just takes you to do the right thing. That's all it takes. For every bad executive order that he's putting out, there could have been someone doing just that for the positives.
You know, our ancestors used to say the same thing that, you know, uh, it, it shouldn't take that long, but you always heard that the voice behind that, well, we're just not ready for that yet. We're not ready.
Well, we as black people, we better get ready. We better get ready.
White people were saying, you know, through the ages that, you know, they weren't ready or, you know, society wasn't ready, you know?
Black people being able to go eat at that counter, oh, we're not ready for that. They were, they're not ready for anything. One thing that I keep explaining to people is we are not the minor, minority. I need people, our people to stop thinking we're the minority. We are the majority. They are sixteen percent of this world population and by twenty sixty, they will be ten percent. We are the majority. Why are we being oppressed by the minority as the majority? Like, this makes no sense. We have to stand up and fight and stop trying to be kind and agreeable. When we see something wrong, happening that's wrong to one person, we need to take it personal and say, this is what's happening.
That was a word. Did you hear that? We have to stop being kind and agreeable.
Exactly. That's what we are. We're too forgiving. We are too forgiving. And my thing is, is if something happens to you, that means it's happening to me and I'm gonna stand up for you. And that's, that's what we need to understand. We, we can't say it takes a village, but yet when a village needs us, we go off to the side. We keep saying, everybody be like, it takes a village. Well, where the hell was the village when we needed?
Yeah, I, I, I dismissed that one a long time ago. Which village? That's the, that's the question.
Exactly. It's, it's insane. Like, I don't really have any words of wisdom for anyone. Honestly, I don't have words of wisdom because everything's already been said. We just have to listen. And the thing is, is we shouldn't have to be forced to listen. And my biggest fear is under this new administration, we're gonna be forced to listen. Like, it shouldn't have never have gotten to this point before we had to listen. Like, it shouldn't have got. Let me tell you something. When they roll back that emancipation proclamation, everybody better be listening.
Be careful.
Some people that was at the White House this week, or last week, yeah.
I mean, what people feel to realize is we're not in the constitution. When you read the constitution, there's nowhere in there. The only place that they mention the enslaved is when they are talking about representation and taxation. Otherwise, they do not talk about us in there. And they're like, well, they have this amendment and that amendment. I'm sorry, they don't address our enslavement in any of those.
It took amendments to be, for me to be included in the constitution.
Right, yeah.
And then you're, and then it took the civil rights movement for them to actually start, so it's they're gonna re, that they're gonna repeal. They, it took that to actually put, give you any kind of rights. The thing is, is we, they don't, we don't have rights under the constitution. So we've been claiming our constitutional rights and it's like, it doesn't apply to us. At what point do you realize it doesn't apply to us?
I don't know if we want to say it doesn't apply to us. It's in there, it's just not enforced.
It's not enforced or applied to us in any situation.
Yeah, it was written in words, but they put it in words with no intention to enforce it. And that's what we have to make sure we stand up and do.
Well, it's very, it's very vague. The words that they use are very vague. And um, yeah.
The original constitution, Thomas Jefferson tried to insert words about enslaved people.
Right.
And they kept having him to take it out. So if you go to the archives, they actually had, well, I don't know if it's there now because you know who
They put it in the back.
They had this awesome exhibit where they showed you the edited versions. They showed you the original handwritten version and then all of the edited versions and then how it looked finally. So, you know, it was, he tried, he tried. all of the edited versions and then how it looked finally. So, you know, it was, he tried, he tried to get sound.
Well, yeah, let's let's remember it wasn't, it was only written for rich white men, what, white men with land back then. Because that that constituted your uh, your your status, exactly. Women weren't, and 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 remember, black men were written into the constitution before women, period. So but we have to remember that, yeah, we all have to come together to enforce what was written there. So that it's a uh, living document and not just a bunch of words that they wrote just to appease folks at that moment or an economic purpose.
Exactly. Well, Nikki, we thank you so much. One thing I like to say about Maryland and you mentioned in the archives, I hope they archive that sweeping police accountability bill that they passed in twenty twenty that was actually not sweeping because if you look at the original, they took out anything that held anybody actually accountable that gave oversight to anybody. So I hope one day someone goes back and takes that sweeping legislation that they claimed was just so wonderful. And actually look at everything that they edited to make sure that the police could still police themselves and nobody was held accountable for anything. That was the worst bill I've ever seen in my life. And the fact that they advocated, the fact that Josephine, I cannot remember her name, but I do not like that lady. I hope I could say that on this show, but huh?
Pina Mel, oh, you said Josephine, I jock.
Josephine, I can't remember her name. She works for some organization that that should not be as close to politicians as she is. How she got on there saying the advocates just loved it is sweeping legislation. And we go to a NACO conference and they're all like, oh, you guys did this. Excellent. And we're like, no, they didn't. So we have to explain to everybody at this conference for police accountability that no, the police still police themselves. Like that gives the citizens no accountability, no, no power. So they thought that let Maryland gave citizens all this power and we were like, no, they did it. Nothing. So.
Yeah, qualified immunity has to go.
Because Maryland should be ashamed of themselves.
Yeah. Well, Nikki, thank you so much for coming on and sharing your story with us. Um, we truly hope that um, in your fight or your walk in life, you know, you get peace and solace, but then you also get justice.
Thank you, Sherman. I'm never gonna have peace and solace. I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to have peace within myself, but peace about my people is, it's gonna be.
Yeah, just at least at least get that.
Yeah, the fight for for my people and their understanding and their safety is never, is gonna be a lifetime fight. So.
That's why they, that's why they trying to beat the woke out of us.
Well, I appreciate you all and thank you very much for having me on. Take care.
Wow. You know.
Yeah, here's another example, another uh, a pattern. A pattern that we're seeing at a branch of government.
Yeah, the the thing about it is, and you know, she was, she said that, you know, this was not about Ayesha for her. I mean, we have to admit that the timing is not the best for her to have come on and said what she said. Um, but we don't dismiss her truth. And um, much respect to her for stepping out and doing all that she's done for the past five years. A condolences to her family and to all those who loved William Green and to other families that are suffering. You know, process is process and the thing that aggravates me the most is when the process is not followed, it's abused, it is covered up, it is short um, stepped sidestepped. Um, and and as I, you know, keep saying, one lie just leads to another lie, another lie. And in the graveyard in Prince George's County is just full of bones, y'all. And I don't know that we will ever see it cleaned up in our lifetime because everything is so intertwined and entangled. And sometimes you have to pick the battle that you want to try to win. And there are a lot of battles. And I just, I mean, you know, when you know what you know, you gotta make that peace within yourself, right? But when you know or you suspect that there are people who are not being forthcoming, forthright, honest. It it's just, you know, it's like, at what point do you just just throw your hands up and say, you win, you got it. I'm raising my white flag. And for so many people, that's the point that they get to. And for those of us who have one little piece of this thing called advocacy and activism, you know, we can't do it all. We can't be the voice for everything. We gotta pick for ourselves what aspect of accountability, advocacy, activism, we want to work on. I worked at Greenpeace. And I was the assistant to the vice president of communications. And um, it was in downtown DC. And I watched wealthy white kids look like they have nothing. They came to work just looking any kind of way. And then on vacation, they would go to Switzerland and Colorado and Vale and all that. And I was like, how do you get to do that? And somebody said they're um, T F Bs. And I said, what's a T F B? And they said, trust fund baby. I said, I don't know any of those. And so as I got to know them more and more and they criticized, the funny part was when I got there, they had just done a press conference earlier in the week and before my first day. And the vice president of communications, dynamic black woman, um, she wore a pink Chanel suit for the press conference and they were talking about her like a doll. And I was like, I'm not understanding why y'all got a problem with her wearing, because that's so materialistic, you know, labels are this and labels are that. But fast forward, I got hired in August. When they came back in after Thanksgiving and Christmas break and they were talking about how they went to their parents' homes and their parents' ski chalets and they went to Europe. I was like, wait a minute, are y'all the same people? Who were talking about her Chanel suit? And I bring that up because that's the dichotomy in which we exist. There are people who say one thing, but they do and live another. They say they're for the people, but they only for some people. And we have to understand that sometimes we will not be one hundred percent victorious in the efforts that we put forward, but we gotta keep trying. Because folks gonna do and be who they are, whether they show you or not. You know, everybody always throwing around Maya Angelou when people show you who they are, believe them. Some people not gonna show you who they are. They gonna tell you who they are. Those people at Greenpeace showed us that they were activists, that they were willing to climb buildings and throw oil and do all this stuff. But they never wanted to tell you that they were wealthy products of corporate America. That some of the very things they were so called fighting against, they were raised on. And so we have to understand that the people who are running for these offices and who work in these offices, they just showing up as who we think they're supposed to be based on the job description. But they not living it and they're not really they not talking, they talk a good game. If we can get past the good game, the talk and accept the talk for what it is and they show us who they are.
That's the big part. Getting past that.
Well, I definitely want to say um, to that point, Frederick Douglass said we have to agitate. And we haven't agitated like we should. Um, and I say that because on one side of the fence, and now I'm getting into partisan stuff, um, one fear enough topic, or even though in in some local areas, you know, what, I'll just give it an overall perspective of things, you know, just so I can do this really quick, but look how long it took for abortion to be overturned. But they did it. So for us and our issues, we have to have that same tenacity. Um, and just like Nikki was saying, you know, she's still in this fight, you know, unwillingly. She's not leading it, you know, she's doing her part of her effort in it, but it's it's a process and it's ongoing and it's something that none of us want to be doing, you know, um, as um, Delores Britman House said earlier, you know, she would rather be doing, you know, uh, at at a function. Lord knows, I would love to go to her brunch. Unlimited mimosas, you got me. But a lot of times I'm often sitting around reading reports and requesting uh, public informations and and all that kind of stuff to to make sure that government is acting as it should, you know? Um, because here in Prince George's County, there aren't a lot of people who are uh, doing uh, some of the work that we're doing right now. You know, there are groups, I'm not gonna say we're the only ones. You know, and if there, if you're out there, we're we're looking for you. Come, you know, come join us. Um, let's consolidate our efforts, but overall, you know, most people are are groups, you know, advocating for, you know, different issues, but who is keeping and making sure that government and the departments and everything, all the services are are being held accountable for. And that's something, you know, we're moving into that space to make sure that, you know, because
Call troublemakers.
Let me let you know, um, I want to know where my money being spent. And a lot of people have been saying that for the longest, so we're answering that call. We're trying to figure it out and we're trying to bring you all the answers as a part of that because you know, that's a question that we've all been asking. And so far, we've been uncovering it. We've been telling you how it's been waste, fraud and abuse. It's been wasteful because of how they uh, perform our contracts with um, you know, from um, uh, from when they sent out the the requests to the closeouts. You know, we've seen how um, we have uh, councils and also school boards uh, overstepping their jurisdiction, abusing the power that they believe they have, creating unfunded mandates. So all of these things are happening with your tax dollars.
Right.
And this is what we're trying to get you to understand. You know, people may feel like five hundred thousand dollars is that much money? Or, you know, a million dollars is that much? Or, you know, it's it's only point one percent of the budget. Yeah, it is. But you know, all that adds up. And I always talk about stuff that my father told me. There was a story, we went to the gas station. And I, we were sh- uh, I was short some change or whatnot. And I was like, you know, Dad, why couldn't, why do we have to go back to the car to get the change? Why couldn't we just, you know, why can't you just say, you know, forget it, you know, we're fine. But he was like, imagine if everybody came to the counter that, you know, uh, to pay for gas that day. And everybody was short five cent, ten cent or something like that. All that adds up.
Exactly.
And that's how we have to look at our budget. All of this stuff adds up.
Right.
And that money that we're complaining about, that could have went to to more jobs that need to be created for the services that we provide. That could have went to more services that we could have had. I mean, spending two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a ten thousand dollar mistake, come on.
Right.
This is the stuff that we're trying to get people to see that there needs to be oversight in these departments.
But they wouldn't spend their money in their household the way they're spending this money.
You know, we don't know.
That, but I'm saying though, at some point, they would have to make a different decision in their household. They may spend it upfront. But eventually it's gonna catch up to you. You have to make different decisions or you're gonna be on the street and you're gonna lose people.
I would love to see the check, checkbooks for some of these people because I I think they bounce checks. Uh, they spend our money the way they spend their money. They probably bouncing checks all around town personally. Because this idea that deficit spending is cool just because you say you're helping seniors, you're helping children. But it, but you're putting us in a deeper hold. There's a serious dick disconnect with um, and 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 I'm gonna say it's a disconnect with just maturity because you haven't really understood the the importance of being financially responsible. And you're spending our money the way you spend your money. And 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 we, we're, I'm I'm at the point now where sometimes I'm feeling people need to submit. If they're gonna have any oversight over budgets, they need to, we need to run a credit report and see what's going on, what's happening in their real life.
You know, um, definitely, I I want to harken back to what the county auditor, uh, Mr. Kisa Green mentioned when she was on here because for me, I asked a question. I was like, well, you know, what's the harm of these? You know, groups are doing the work. They getting the money, doing the work. She says, well, you have to look at it. Yes, they're getting the work done, but are they doing it at a fair price? Has that been equity distributed and and all those other things? So and I was like, well, you know, you're you're right. You know, how do we know you didn't pay five hundred dollars for some eggs versus seven ninety nine or something like that, you know, I'm
Yeah, like a gold toilet. You you didn't purchase a gold toilet.
Right, right, right.
You know, one other.
First of all, as we see, somebody did use the government purchase card, you know, months after, you know, that car should have been revoked. So, yeah, it it this is it's too much.
I'm gonna tell you, there's something, and sometimes I feel, and Sherman, you would know, that they are harder on Realtors. And and uh, than other professionals in the industry. You know, one of the things in order to become a broker, after you've gone through the training, the final thing that you have to do to become a broker is submit your credit report. And the reason why they say you have to submit your credit report is because you are going to be overseeing other people's money. You have to oversee uh, escrow accounts. You have to be, and and you have to show that you are a good steward over your own money. And if not, you can't be a broker. The same should happen with council people.
Where in the government, where I'm at, it was the same thing, you know, um, I'm not gonna say with your agency, but um, you know, they they did their checks even for a public trust, you know, because I wouldn't I have that. And they put that in the report if you have credit issues or anything like that that you have to work out. So you know, tho- those are indicators. And I wonder, like you say, if that, but then again.
Requirements. I'm sorry.
Remember the 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 note that was dropped into CAG chat that a lot of people saw. And I was like, well, this is the actual purpose of using, you know, the uh, anonymous feature when they was like, well, in order to ensure that our county services are ran properly, we need to get rid of nepotism, cronyism and 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 all the other isms that are happening, you know, um, because people are being hired based upon, you know, who they sleeping with and, you know, um, it's just, you people can't focus on their jobs because they're harassed.
But even before that, getting back to my point about the credit report, that will uh, if that's a requirement, especially if you're gonna be over a budget, you need to show that you are going to be financial sound and you start with your own um, own finances. We should, that should be a requirement for our elected officials that are going to have any oversight or any uh, thing to do with budgets.
Oh, you're saying for elected official. I was talking about for for government workers, but including them too as well.
About, yeah. Exactly.
I mean.
They, you need to understand that they are going to, if they can't do right by their own finances or the fact that their financials uh, situation is so bad, they can be blackmailed or whatever, you need to know that because I'm gonna tell you, I I was kind of shocked that.
I don't know. I I'm not feeling um, feeling my credit report.
I am.
I can't trust these.
Send it to the board of elections because we need to know. Um, you know, you got people, uh, this is one of the things that I had saw. Um, as I was looking at some things when we were looking at things with the school system. I have seen a pattern of people being elected into office where houses are in foreclosure and or they're in a for- pre foreclosure action. They get on, they get elected into office and then all of a sudden they got the money to get out of foreclosure. Uh, you know, I've seen these things actually happen, uh, you know, as I, uh, as we were as we were doing our investigation on certain things of of monies not not working right, you know, and and this is primarily in the school system. But my my point is, we have to do something to have some accountability before eh, before they even get into office. Because we have nothing to hold anybody accountable. We have no recall laws. And so, and most people here feel that, you know, we use the dummy ballot. So if you get in office, you're gonna get two terms and then I'll go to the next office. Um, so we don't have mechanisms in place.
The school board.
Exactly. So we don't have mechanisms in place so that it's not, I don't think it's always that people don't want to do anything, but you get tired of going into circles. And I think that that's why some people get discouraged because.
There's no penalty.
Exactly. Our system is set up to keep those voices that wanna hold people accountable on the jumble wheel. You're going around and around and around. You see the same old people as you go around just laughing, cause they know you can't get off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
What gets me though is the same people out here in these streets pretending to be such great community leaders and advocates. They're the ones that are getting stipends, police escort services, grants that they don't go through the regular process for. I'm not saying they don't, they're not doing work, but they just don't have to go through the same process. And it's just so tiring. And, 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 and the thing is, if you don't know, if you're on the side of, of receiving the benefit of knowing these people and what the good work they're doing, you, you think it's wonderful. You glad to see them in the mix. But when you on the other side and you know what's happening behind the scenes, it's a farce. They're not doing that great of a job and they, and they need to go sit down someplace. But the, but the politicians exploit them and they don't even realize they being exploited, cause they feel like they important, like the ninjas at the White House for Black History Month celebration that was canceled. How you cancel Black History Month throughout the federal government and then you host something yourself and they in there laughing and carrying on, like you are.
And then you degrade, you degrade someone of your own race because he's speaking out against injustices that are being inflicted on other people. Right. So you hold his face up like you're ready to put his head on, 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 on the, um, Yeah, but I was thinking, I was thinking more prehistoric. He put it, yeah, he's gonna put his head on a stake around a bunch of fire and you think it's funny. And it's not.
Big head things. But yeah, I mean, we can go on and on and on and.
Well, well, let me just make one more point. I think we, we gotta get the, we have to start pressuring our state legislators to put in place some recall laws. We need some recall in Maryland. Because not having it is nothing more than a get out of jail free card. Because, well, everybody knows the pattern. You go to the office, you do all your corrupt deeds and before you get prosecuted, you resign. And then the first thing they say, because you're from an administrative agency, well, there's no jurisdiction because they're gone. And they've gotten thi- this pattern down on how you can, crime can pay in the state of Maryland.
A little bit of timing. But we, um, appreciate everyone who has stuck with us. Uh, for those who joined in the middle, please circle back to catch the other parts of our conversation. Uh, we truly appreciate your feedback and everybody who participates. Thank you so much, Facebook and YouTube, uh, viewers. Um, if you haven't watched the Keith Washington, uh, story, please go back and check that. Um, just a, a, a note to everyone, all of our videos are, uh, stored in our feature sec- section on Facebook. And if you, um, YouTube us, I'm not gonna say you Google us, if you YouTube us, um, you, and look for CAG chat, all of our videos uploaded there as well.
Sherman, I'm sorry. One more thing I meant to say. I did find the press conference or one of the press conferences that State Attorney Brave Boy did, and I put that link in the, um, Facebook comment.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, well, um, again, definitely, um, you know, our inbox is open. You guys can reach out to us. We do accept um, informational tips. Uh, so we'll be accepting real tips. You know, because this work, uh, does cause, you know, uh, we just discovered, uh, what? Three stacks almost for MPI requests that we sent out. So, you know, we have to pay for these things. It'd be nice to get some assistance. But we haven't set up that yet. We'll do that in the process. But, yeah.
Don't forget school board, school board meetings tomorrow at a different location.
Yes, yes, yes. Uh, that's gonna be at the Wayne Curry Administration Building.
At five thirty. So rush from work. Get there.
Them senators can't even pick a county. Some of them can't even, never mind. Go ahead, Sherman.
All right. Well, thank you guys so much, uh, for sticks, for sticking with us, um.